Good morning. Today is the twenty-seventh day of our August meeting. Time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Identify yourself for the record, starting over here.
Tim Klein, Treasurer's Office.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Ike Fodden, Clerk's Office.
Keith Roberti, Clerk's Office.
Lisa Posey, Clerk's Office.
Amber Daniel, Clerk's Office.
Deja Zuber, Clerk's Office.
Jessica Donald H R.
Lindsay Wheeler, Clerk's Office.
Kristi Gardner, Clerk's Office.
Chris Gardner, Citizen.
Katie Matheran, Clerk's Office.
Nicole Camardo, Clerk's Office.
Sarah, Clerk's Office.
Heidi Bell, Clerk's Office.
Trent Triple, County Court.
Ammon Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Substitute IT guy. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda. All right, we'll proceed. We have one employee recognition. Go ahead and read your recognition.
Okay, Kristi. Twenty years of service for the Clerk's Office. Thank you very much for all that service. Kristi started with Clerk's Office when she was just twenty-five years old. You're only twenty-five years old now. She clerked for Judge Oates for seventeen years. After Judge Oates retired, Judge Wingrove took over, and she has been clerking for him ever since. She is also the lead clerk on the second floor. Kristi's knowledge of being an in-court clerk is untouchable. She has helped create and maintain many ever-changing procedures over the years with an unwavering support from her, for her coworkers, Kristi and for her coworkers and from them both. Kristi, thank you so much for your dedication, hard work, and loyalty to the Clerk's Office over the past twenty years. We look forward to many more years.
Not too many, right?
Congratulations, Kristi. Is there anyone from the Clerk's Office who wants to say anything about triple?
Yeah, Judge Oates may be listening. If he is, I apologize now, but seventeen years clerking for him is really the, the heavy lift. He's a good judge. I shouldn't say too much about that, but Kristi's impact on court operations in general has been massive, and I, it's impossible to really communicate to the citizens of Ada County who have been through the court system, the impact someone that has, like Kristi, who's been here for twenty years and has influenced what goes on on that second floor. It's just been awesome and grateful for it and hope to have you for at least a little longer.
Can't retire yet.
Until you're at least thirty or something. So, thank you, Kristi. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank you very much because you're always so easy to go to. From day one, since I started here, you're one of the people that like I instantly felt comfortable around, always have good answers in a fast-paced environment, and it made my job easier, and I thank you every day and for the personal stories that we share.
Right.
Dog love is a deep thing for both of us, so I'm glad we could have a conversation happen. I do hope we can keep you around for a few more years, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, receive you, Matt. John, I'll give you the, the award, big picture. Anybody else who would like to stand with you?
Probably my husband.
And my friends.
We'll get one with just you, and then we'll bring everybody else up.
All right, Brian. Well, Kristi, behalf of citizens of Ada County, thank you for your long years of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm outside, too.
Tell me when, and I'll get down, but I can't stay.
I'll just take a knee.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Just a quick one. Just a quick one.
Okay, we have some unfinished business to take care of, which will require a motion.
Commissioner, I move to remove the unfinished business from table for consideration.
Second motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the first item is Development Services Belarus Subdivision.
Chairman Commissioners, we tabled this at the August fourteenth meeting to get the approval documents ready for you to sign. There have been no changes since that hearing, so it's ready for your approval and signature.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Development Services recommendation for project number two zero two four zero zero one seven one dash CPA dash ZC dash DA dash S dash B dash HD dash PR, Belarus subdivision. I authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board based on the findings of pact and conclusions of law.
And the information received at hearing. Thank you. All right. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have application two zero zero six zero zero two one nine DADN and two oh two four zero zero two eight seven CPA ZOA Boise Hunter Homes. This is a amendment, a couple of amendments to their, their project. Any, any questions or any issues?
No, Chairman Commissioners.
We have a process for doing that. I know we do, but I don't know whether it is.
Chairman Commissioners, this, again, similar tabled from the August fourteenth hearing to a pair of documents to reflect the decision that you made. As you recall, staff was supportive of their exchange in the zoning ordinance for substantial enforcement definition, and you ultimately agreed with that and then also agreed to separate the three controlling documents for Boise Hunter Homes, Directory Grant, the Development Agreement, zoning ordinance, and their master plan. So these documents reflect that decision.
Okay.
So you get, just out of civil motion, do we have to have separate motions on the change and separate? You can just, actually, I think you've already moved to approve this, so you're really just signing the documents today, so you can just reflect that you're approving and signing those documents for that, I think. It'd be one motion, fine.
Yeah, one motion is fine. We're ready for the motion, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the recommendation for project number two zero zero six zero zero two one nine dash DA dash DN and two zero two four zero zero two eight seven dash CPA dash ZOA Boise Hunter Homes as listed on the agenda based on the findings of pact, conclusions of law, and the revised documents from planning or development services.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That document is signed. Okay, direct from Europe, Bureau of Procurement Officer.
Are you back in the seat?
Back inside.
Trying to get back into, yes, coming out of vacation mode, back into work mode.
Okay, well, we have some, some items of business that we tabled for today. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, under unfinished business today, we have a couple items, the first of which is final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two four zero three three, the Ada County Sheriff's Office jail RFID inmate tracking system, and the evaluation team has completed the evaluations for this project, and we'd like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Go ahead.
All right. Uh, later dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two four zero three three. Dear members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two four zero three three. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, Autonomy Today LLC, doing business as Cadmus. They have a score of one hundred nineteen point seven one. Number two is Guard One by Timekeeping Systems Incorporated, and they have a score of one hundred fifteen point five four. Number three is Guardian RFID. They have a score of eighty-eight point eight four. Number four is Actol Corporation, and they have a score of forty-nine point three six. And number five is DI Group Detection Innovation Group, and they have a score of forty point four zero. So it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two four zero three three to Autonomy Today LLC Cadmus as the number one ranked proposer.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the award for RFP two four zero three three as recommended to, what was the name of that again? Their name is Autonomy Today LLC Cadmus. Autonomy Today LLC Cadmus as recommended by the committee.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we'll take up award of bid number two four zero six one, Sheriff's Office.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, today we have, our second item is award of bid two four zero six one, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Court Services Bureau Window Replacement twenty twenty-four, and the evaluation team has reviewed the bids for this project, and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Please read the letter.
I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two four zero six one. Dear members of the Board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two four zero six one to Excelsior Construction Company as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of one hundred eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we have, based on the evaluation committee's recommendation, award bid two four zero six one to Excelsior.
Construction.
Construction Company for a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
All right, moving on to new business. I'll open the public hearing on resolution three oh, three zero one one, a resolution approving and adopting, revise and update Ada County investment policy and providing an effective date. Do we have any, anyone here like to speak about the investment policy?
Well, Commissioner, we, per our policy, we review it every two years, and we do an update at any time if there's a significant change in the policy. For this particular update, there was some legislation that was enacted in two thousand twenty-three, and as far as the investments are concerned, there's been no change in the type of investments that the county can participate in. It's just incorporating the new code into our investment policy by mentioning that specific code along with the other codes. And Ammon is here, if he wants to have any other comments to that.
Oh, we all want to listen to Ammon.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley, they added a provision in state law that essentially just summarized existing law, but put it into a section of the code that dealt with specifically the duties of treasures and investment of county funds, whereas before it was found in other parts of the code that dealt just with handling of public monies. And so there was no substantive change in the law, so there was just some changes in, in references to the statute, so.
Well, thank you. Any other discussion on resolution three zero one one? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number three zero one one. Call for a motion.
Do we need it, we, do we need a precise effective date in the motion?
We do have.
It's in the, it's in the resolution.
It's in, it's in, it's in the resolution, but I've been in the motion. Do we need it?
Yeah, it's in the res.
Yep.
It's in the resolution.
Yep.
I just didn't know we needed it in the motion. I move to approve resolution number three zero one one regarding investment policy providing effective date and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on fire protection annexation into the North Ada County Fire and Rescue District and approve an order of annexation of Gibson Properties into the North Ada County Fire Rescue District. Is there any questions or discussions on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's, the pro, you might, we might want to outline the process that the, the landowners rep, made this. It's their decision to be included. Fire Protection District has, has agreed with that and petitioned us to do this, so that's just.
Right.
The process we get there. We're not just unilaterally.
No, we're not, we don't just unilaterally reach out and, and force somebody to go into a fire protection district. This is at their request. So, uh, I, I don't hear any objection or any issues, so I'll close the public hearing on fire protection annexation in North Ada County Fire and Rescue District and the order, the order, and call for, for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I approve, move that we approve the annexation of Gibson Properties into the North Ada County Fire and Rescue District and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. There's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have a review of proposals and received award recommendation for goods and services. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, under our new businesses this morning is that review of proposals, and this is the review of RFP two four zero six seven Ada County Custodial Services for Coroner's Office autopsy areas, and the evaluation team has completed the evaluations for this project and would like to submit this letter of recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, you could read the letter.
It's a letter dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two four six, two four zero six seven. Dear members of the Board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two four zero six seven. A final ranking of qualified candidates was, was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, American Cleaning Services, and they have a score of eighty-one point five four. Number two is First Class Cleaning LLC, and they have a score of seventy-seven point eight seven. And number three is Golden Hands Cleaning and Maintenance with a score of seventy-three point five zero. It is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two four zero six seven to American Cleaning Services as the number one ranked proposer.
Okay, any questions? None, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve RFP two four zero six seven and award as rec, as recommended to American Cleaning Services and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, we have alcohol licenses and catering permits. Any question or issues on any of these? Looks like we have one recommended denial. We'll take the denial one up first. Matt Sweet Brewing. All right, go ahead.
Chairman Commissioners, yes, so I was asked to speak on this denial of this catering permit, so the event that they've requested this catering permit for would require planning approval from our office, Development Services. Unfortunately, they never went through that process. We have been in contact with both Matt Sweet Brewing and the organizer of the event to let them know that this, without a planning approval, we can't really approve this catering permit. At a minimum, they would need a temporary use approval for a seasonal event, and that's normally a thirty-day process. This permit came in probably about twenty, roughly twenty-five days ago or, or less, so again, not enough time to get through that process, and that's the reason we've recommended denial.
But they didn't ask for?
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't ask. It sounds like this group does this throughout the valley. They put on performances in the backyards of people who own large properties, and they are a nonprofit. But yeah, again, it's, it's a ticketed event. It would be something that would require planning approval through our code, and so for that reason, we've recommended denial of that catering permit.
You might want to get ahold of them and let them know the full process.
Yes, and I, I have explained it to a certain extent, but I'll let them know.
Sure. Okay, well, I'll accept the motion.
And this is based on the fact that it is a ticketed event, correct?
Yes, it's a.
There's a certain criteria of what they're doing that they need the permit for.
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, yes. One, being a ticketed event automatically qualifies it for something that isn't just a backyard get-together as a personal event. Two, it's a hundred and twenty-five people that they were looking to bring from off-site to park on their property and to set up in the backyard. It is a larger property, but you know, a hundred and twenty-five cars in someone's backyard next to neighbors usually doesn't go too well if they haven't gone through the proper planning approvals. So yeah, those are the kind of the two major criteria. Also, just the, you know, needs on services that an event like this would put, you know, need an emergency or something like that, we need the opportunity to run all this by appropriate agencies to make sure they're on board.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, we were just picking and choosing here, there was, there was a specific reason why.
Yes, yeah. Based on our zoning ordinance, this would require planning approval, so that's the reason.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny the catering permit for Matt Sweet Brewing Company, two five nine five South Linda Road, ready in Boise for the performance at the Cyberline, a play at Shakespeare on August thirty-first from six P M. to nine thirty P M., that we denied the permit.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have the balance of the permits and licenses. Any questions or discussions? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I approve, I move that we approve the catering permits as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have new licenses and two license transfers. I'll accept the motion on those two.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we approve the one new license and the two license transfers as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have the Clerk's Office. You're representing the Clerk's Office today, Katie?
I am, yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. I wanted to start by introducing our clerk for the day, so Lindsay Wheeler works as an in-court clerk on the fourth floor, and she was selected to be this month's clerk for the day, so she's going to hang out with the admin team today and get a better idea of kind of what we do day to day. She's worked for our office in several capacities. She used to work at the Recorder's Office. She's helped out at elections, so she's always very willing to help, so we're excited to spend the day with her.
Do they get a little extra pay for being a clerk for the day?
She asked about that this morning. If she could go ahead and take on trans-salary for the day, she would appreciate that, but maybe next day. Other than that, as you know, we have a general election coming up, so a couple of things to note about that. We already have over twenty-six thousand absentees in the queue as of this morning, so expect.
Twenty-six thousand, now are these ones that have requested in the primary and they checked the box to send it up?
Some of them, yes. Mm-hmm. Yep, some of them have requested an absentee ballot for the entire year. Some have just gone on to get the general election absentee ballot. So those will drop mid-September and get out to residents. We, this election, are going to do three weeks of early voting rather than our typical two weeks to hopefully alleviate some lines on election day. So those locations will be at all the city halls. We're going to do the Bound Crossing Library along with our elections location as well. Um, couple of.
Excuse me, those are listed on the clerks, so people, if they want to do, find out where those are, they're listed on the, on the website, right?
Yes, so we will be deploying our kind of elections guide with all of the deadline dates, where they can drop ballots at our drop boxes or early vote. All of those things will be kind of packaged together and on the website, and we'll push those on social media and press releases as well.
So people will know that.
Yes. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is October twenty-fifth. And yeah, as I mentioned, we'll do three weeks of early voting rather than just the two, so that's what I have to report.
What's the, what is the current number of registered voters in Ada County?
We have just over three hundred thousand registered voters. We're expecting an eighty to ninety percent turnout for this election as well, so it's a, we'll be busy for the next several months.
Just over three hundred thousand, but how much over?
Oh, I don't know the exact number. Just over.
Just over, oh, okay. All right.
And traditionally, how many do we have? Because we have same-day voter registration, how many do we have on the same-day voter, register on same day?
I, I don't know that number off the top of my head. I could get that for you, though. I don't want to give you the incorrect number.
Just, just curious as to what that was on a, on a, on a statistical average basis from ahead of the head.
Sure, yeah, I can get that for you.
Come in on same day.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty to ninety percent, that's high.
Yes, for a presidential election, that's what we would expect.
And, and that's based on the history of presidential elections, you're asking, that's where yours come?
Yep.
Okay. Wow. Anything else? Sure?
I'm sure.
You guys are going to be busy, and thank you for having the clerk of the day so that people can actually get experience in all the various factions.
Yeah, it's been a fun program.
Of where they might end up at some point in time in their career.
Great.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Claims Journal. I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to approve the claims as listed on the Claims Journal for August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. I'll authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have personnel actions. Any questions or discussion on any of these personnel actions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, you in the Sessionist Office? Do we have anyone here from Sessionist Office? It doesn't appear so, so apparently there isn't. Okay, Treasurer's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Daley. We're just now past the two-month point of our second half tax collections for twenty twenty-three taxes, so I thought I'd just provide an update on where we are in our collections efforts.
Sure.
And of the seven hundred twenty-nine million that was billed, we've collected a total of ninety-nine point five four percent, so we've got a good collection. It kind of is in line with our historical numbers where we're in the ninety-nine percentile. After those second half collection periods ends, approximately a week to two weeks will. those second half collection periods ends, approximately a week to two weeks after that, we send out late notices because a lot of times people didn't get the bill for whatever reason. And so that is productive. We begin to collect more. And another thing that happens is people will, for instance, they may have a rental property, and they have the bill going to their personal residence, and they move from there, and they forget to update the new mailing address, and so it's just out there floating around. Eventually, it makes its way back to us. So we, we do some research, and we try to find out where they've gone. And so we're still, that's an ongoing process. It always works out that way, and we're never at one hundred percent collection. But I just wanted to point out where we were with that. The first half is ninety-nine point eight three percent, second half is ninety-nine point two six, so the combined for the year is ninety-nine point five four, which is approximately seven hundred twenty-six million collected. And then I just wanted to give a brief update on our, we have a tax auction coming up, just a little less than a month away, on September twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. We had eight properties last week. This week, we have seven, so we had one of them pay off. Of those seven, four of them are those sort of odd-shaped, you know, we call them wedges sometimes. Sometimes they're just a little two-foot strip of land between two properties. So we really only have three homes, and hopefully we'll get more collections on those so they don't, so they don't go to auction. I think that's, I think that's kind of it.
And they're going to all be on September twenty-third, all of them?
Yep, they'll all go and be available for people to bid on on September twenty-third. That'll go through the twenty-sixth, and then the ending is the twenty-sixth. So they have up till the ending of that auction period to redeem those properties.
And how do we advertise those? So that people know?
Well, we have it, we have it on our website. We, the auction service, you know, does their sort of advertising, and there's a lot of interest. So it's not like it flies below, below the radar. There are people that constantly call in our office looking for properties, and I think they probably do that with all counties. What I've noticed is.
Go ahead and just go on the website, can't they?
They can go on our website. It lists them. It shows the address. They can look at the property. They can go Google Maps and kind of look around that way. What I've noticed is in the past, and you probably have as well, is I think the, the property with the highest amount of is just a little over ten thousand. So it doesn't mean somebody's going to, you know, get a property for ten thousand. What we see is especially when the market. Yeah, a property may sell for three hundred thousand. And so the county just collects a portion of, that they're due, the ten thousand and change or whatever in this example, and the remaining amount will go to the owner.
Yeah, I was just going to explain that.
Or people of interest.
Yes, or people of interest who have interest in the property.
Thank you for explaining that, because last year in the legislature, they had some.
Questions.
Some questions about what we, what we, the county was able to do with extra funds, if there was any.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
I remember there was a news story, I think, that kind of was a catalyst, but that happened in another state, and fortunately Idaho law doesn't allow for that, and so it's, it's a fair process.
Right.
In Idaho.
So we only keep what is owed to, and that's really owed to the taxpayers of Ada County.
Exactly. Just to the penny, nothing more. There's no profit for the county at all.
Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have approval of minutes. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as listed on the agenda. And authorize. And authorize the chair to sign the documents.
Okay. Thank you. I'll second the motion. If there's any further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two agreements at Barbara Park Education and Event Center.
I move that we approve the Barbara Park Education and Event Center, two listed items as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have ratification of the, of an agreement between Ada County and Victor's Apps Incorporated for Prepared Live Communication Services. It was already signed, but we need to ratify it.
I move that we ratify the agreement number three zero zero five one as listed on the agenda and at the ratified signature that's already on that document.
Second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Now we have a number of agreements. Most of these agreements are renewals of contracts already out there. And so if there are any question or any issues on any of these agreements, they literally are mainly renewals, because our agreements only last for one year, and these are to re-up these agreements. Any question? I'll accept the motion.
I move that we approve the agreements as listed on the agenda. There's thirty-two of them. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second the motion. Before we go, is there any question or any issues on any of the agreements? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, saying aye and saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have two items on the weekly engine, an engine service. One, the first is the weekly engine items. I'll accept the motion to approve the weekly engine items.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the weekly engine items as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Now we have engine collection and distributions that was discussed at our, at our engine meeting on Wednesday. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, on Wednesday, the motion that was made there was not, was inadvertently left on the agenda, not agendized. So I would move that we direct the Indian and Services staff to provide a monthly report to the board showing collections received and make one annual payment to the state of Idaho each May, retaining thirty percent of such annual collections as an administrative fee.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? You want to discuss it?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Um, Trent would like to have some further discussions about this, just to make sure that whatever we do in terms of operationalizing this decision is correct per the board's wishes. So we'll be looking to schedule some more time with, with the board to further discuss this since we weren't at that meeting, but that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, well, that's fine. We.
If there's a patient would be discussed, I would guess.
Sure.
No, that'd be fine. Anyway, did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All right, and note that we'll have further discussions with clerk and engine staff. I mean, we've been talking about this for a year or so. So we have had some discussions, but we'll have, happy to have more discussions. So.
On the implementation, because we, we discussed if we were going to do it.
Yeah.
Kind of decided we were going to have a meeting.
And we have a legal decision and everything, so we're fine. All right, you've heard a motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we waive the noise ordinance for Bruce Slakee wedding, nine fourteen, twenty twenty-four, four thirty P M. to midnight.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the board?
Just a, a note on that one we just did, that had, there is a process for getting that to the board as well, and neighbors have to be notified, et cetera, so.
Yeah, that's correct. And they, they, apparently Mr. Slakee, Slakee did that. And so we're waiving the noise ordinance for that particular wedding on that location, so that, and he's notified his neighbors and all that, which is what the noise ordinance requires. All right, thank you. Without any further ado, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good morning. Today is Tuesday, is Tuesday, August twenty-seventh. The time is nine forty. The board is in session, acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District, open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is absent. Could you identify yourself for the record?
John Blake Paramedics.
John Blake Paramedics is here, and we have substitute I T guy. Okay. Ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the Claims Journal. I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the claims, EMS Claims Journal as for August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the approval of the minutes. I'll accept the motion on the approval of the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as listed on the agenda for the Emergency Medical Services and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have an agreement, Agreement number three zero one eight seven between Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and U F G Chronos Systems LLC to provide telestaff cloud services. So it's cloud services, right?
Uh, yes, that's right.
Not cloud C D.
No. We're moving from a local version of our scheduling software to the cloud-based.
Good. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the EMS Agreement number three zero one eight seven to Ada County EMS and District U F G Chronos Systems LLC, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
All second motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, now we get an EMS update.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley, the fair is over.
Yay.
Yeah, that's right. We have a special events team that did really well this year. Four hundred twenty-seven contacts with folks out of the, at the fair. That, that's everything from Band-Aids to Moliskin to Ibuprofen or sunscreen. I believe a hundred and thirty-eight of those became patients, so a bit more assessment and treatment. That's roughly a third, and then seven transports out of the, or six transports out of the fair. As part of that, both the Ada County Sheriff and Ada County Paramedics used Ready Op, which is something that Joe Lombardo's group got for us, that makes it really easy for all the people involved in the fair to see all the planning, all the names, all the phone numbers, all the organizational structure of the fair on their phone now. And so the, the need for written documents doesn't so much exist anymore. If you want to know anything about what's going on as a, as a responder on our side or the Ada County Sheriff's side, all you need to do is pick up your phone and, and click a link, and it's all there. That's a long way from what the fair looked like when I started. Pretty neat stuff. So it just makes the interoperability of our departments really smooth.
You said seven transports.
Si- it was six.
Six transports.
Yes, there were six transports.
And that was at the hospital.
Right. That's right.
That's pretty remarkable, considering there's hundreds of thousands of people at the fair.
Well, and, and so I think that speaks to our, our team, our special events team, the, the paramedics and E M Ts that do the standby, and the logistics and our, our special events folks that are able to manage most of those people on the site, take care of them there, so they don't have to be transported. They do a darn good job.
How do you decide if somebody needs sunscreen?
I think mostly because they ask for it. They walk in and, they walk in and say those.
You have to be sunscreen.
And so we just, we track those contacts.
All right, good, good. Anything else?
We had a hiring recently. Hired three. Three are on the list, which I always find to be staggering that somebody would put their, their name on a list for us. I, I feel a sense of honor that, that somebody's willing to wait. And then we hired five new reserves, hired, took on five new reserve positions. Chief Shabbat, Jeremy Shabbat, is in charge of the hiring process, and he said of the three we hired, he, he was immediately in fear of his own job. They're so smart. And so I, I, I thought for a guy that went to Cornell and is one of the smarter people I know, that's also a pretty good indicator of the quality of candidate that we're receiving.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Great.
I thought so, too.
Clearly, clearly we have an operation that is respected and people want to work there, so that's great.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's good. Appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Well, if there's nothing else, do you have anything on for us, substitute I T guy?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Keep everything under control.
Yes. Yeah, okay. Well, with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.